I'll call the meeting order is Town Plan and Zoning Commission. Town of Fairfield for May 11, 2021. We are here a little early at 6:00 PM for a closed executive session. An update from our town attorney on pending litigation relating to 131 Beach Road, Fairfield.
Just as a Mr. Chairman, just as a matter of protocol, you do need to have a formal motion and vote, two thirds vote to enter into closed executive session.
Great. So I see a motion to go into closed executive session by Commissioner Noonan and a second by Commissioner Corcoran. Thank you, guys. Commissioner Noonan, you have a question? Oh, I think he's frozen. His hand is up and he's frozen. Does anyone have any questions or comments on the motion? No, seeing none, hearing none. All in favor, say aye or raise your hand. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Meg, I assume you voted in the affirmative. Yep, good. That motion carries unanimously. Therefore, no abstentions and no objections. So we are officially in closed executive session.
Okay, I'm pausing the recording. I've resumed recording. And for those who are in the meeting, I'm going to turn off folks' video until public hearing item. At which time you can certainly turn your video back on. It just allows our chair to be able to see everybody more clearly.
Thanks. And could you also mute? Non-commissioners and if I could ask if you're not speaking to also mute your line. I'm getting some feedback.
Good evening, everyone. Good night.
Good night, Attorney Herbst. Thank you for your time. So I will call the meeting back to order in a regular session. We've just completed our closed executive session. No decisions were made and no votes were taken. So the first item on our regular agenda is bills and communications, the meeting minutes from April 27, 2021. Can I have a motion on those? Motion to approve by Commissioner Francis. Second. Second by Commissioner Berman. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, you need to, I'm sorry for just to, Commissioner Braun is not yet here. We need to have a regular or an alternate member sitting for her and it would be Commissioner Gordon's turn.
Right. Very good. Commissioner Gordon, you were at the last meeting. You're up to speed. Just raise your hand. Yep, very good. Commissioner Gordon, you are, thank you very much for sitting for Commissioner Braun.
And I apologize, as I was speaking, I forgot who seconded the motion to approve the minutes.
You are seconded by Commissioner Berman.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions on the minutes? I took a look. I didn't see any irregularities.
Only that I was not at the meeting, so whoever sat in for me would probably vote.
Well, we had Commissioner Di Giacomo sat for you last meeting. And so you could either, well, you could abstain from this one, right? All right. So you can recuse, if you recused yourself, then Commissioner Di Giacomo would sit in your place. Either that or you could abstain from voting, in which case you wouldn't.
I'll abstain.
Okay, very good. All right.
Meeting either, but I watched it.
You watched it? Okay, good. Very good. So, all right, very good. Hearing, no other comments. All in favor of the minutes, say aye or raise your hand. Aye. All opposed and those abstaining. One abstention. Commissioner Levy, otherwise we have a unanimous approval of the meeting minutes from April 27, 21, 21. The next is item B Quincy Street, review of proposed town acquisition of property. Mr. Wen? You're on mute. You're still on mute. Mr. Wen, you're still on mute.
I'm sorry. I am going to yield this item to our Mark Barnhart, who is our Director of Community Economic Development, who has joined us for this matter.
Excellent. Hello, Mr. Barnhart.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, thank you for having me here tonight. For the record, Mark Barnhart, Director of Community Economic Development for the Town of Fairfield. Just briefly, this is a continuation of a program began last fall with the purchase acquisition of 350 Quincy Street, which, as you know, is part of the Parkview Commons Affordable Housing Development. We are now looking to purchase three additional properties within the same development. Those are 362, 385, and 409 Quincy Street, as in your packet. The purpose is to purchase properties when they're offered for sale with the intent of assembling several parcels for redevelopment purposes. The goal is not only to preserve the existing affordable homeownership units there and address longstanding flood compliance issues, but also to increase the number of affordable housing units through redevelopment. It is before you under an 824 referral. It has been unanimously approved by, to date, the Affordable Housing Committee, the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance, and it is presently before you, and then it needs to make a stop at the RTM. Happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Great. Thank you very much. This is a very much appreciated next step in our journey towards increasing the affordable housing stock in the Town of Fairfield, and we appreciate the effort. Does anyone have any questions? Yes, Mr. Commissioner Levy.
Yeah, until the property is redeveloped, would the town continue to rent or continue to use these properties for affordable housing?
We do have with 350 Quincy, a holdover tenant. I anticipate because of the timing of this and the potential delay in terms of their, the existing homeowner securing other housing, that there may be a need to have holdover tenants in one or two of these properties as well. What's pushing this along is that one of the homeowners here has has an offer to purchase another property and can't close until this is is done, and another one can't secure a mortgage financing to purchase another property until until we have moved this process along. So that is contemplated, but not to an outside party because I don't think I want to deal with any relocation or displacement issues when we do eventually redevelop the property.
Thank you.
Commissioner Corcoran.
Marcus, anticipated that all the properties will be able to be acquired?
At some point, I think initially we had targeted five to six parcels as part of the first phase. We were looking on Quincy Street properties that were near or contiguous to one another to assemble those parcels. And, you know, it just happened that there were a number of homeowners that had reached a point in their lives where they were interested in moving on to different housing. So but, you know, eventually I think we would open it up to other other property owners and continue this if it proves successful, and I have no reason to doubt that it will be.
And is the ultimate goal to replace those houses?
Yes, yeah, the goal is to, these are all very modest. They serve the community and the folks that live there very well, but they're very modest houses built back in the mid to late 1950s. They're not particularly energy efficient. They're slab-on-grade construction, so it's difficult, although not impossible, to elevate them to comply with FEMA requirements. So it's our intent to demolish the existing structures and build new at the correct flood elevation.
It's my understanding that they're caps on the resale of each of these properties?
Yes, yeah, they're subject to resale restrictions to keep them as affordable homeownership units. All the the purchase price obviously are well within the formula price, and we do have appraisals to back up the purchase price.
Thank you.
Other questions? I think my sense is that this is a very well-received step in the process.
I might add that we may, I may have to make one final journey to present one or two additional properties as part of this initial phase, but they weren't ready yet. So I may see you at a subsequent meeting date.
Good, understood. Okay. Seeing no other hands being raised, I think it's pretty self-explanatory. So this is before us now for a a motion for a favorable recommendation to the Board of Selectmen to execute on the plan and acquire the property, correct?
Yes, into the RTM.
Great, okay. And so can I have such a motion? Commissioner Levy, so moved. Commissioner Berman, seconded. Thank you. Any other comments or questions on the motion? All those in favor, say aye or raise your hand. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That's a unanimous favorable recommendation to the Board of Selectmen and RTM to move forward. Thank you, Mr. Barnhart.
Thank you, commissioners. Have a good meeting.
So our next item is Old Business 2A zoning regulation amendments, application of 15 Uncle Road LLC to amend Sections 12 and 28 of the zoning regulations. This is a holdover from earlier agendas. We do have a special meeting, planning meeting scheduled for tomorrow evening, starting at, is it 6:30, Mr. Wen?
That is correct. Yes, reminder, we're on again for tomorrow at 6:30.
Right, to discuss exactly these proposed regulation amendments. And so my, I would look for a motion to table this item. So Mr. Noonan and seconded by Commissioner Levy. Thanks. Anybody otherwise have any questions on this one? No, seeing none. All in favor of motion to table, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions unanimously tabled. Thank you. Next item is compliances, 1271 Stratfield Road zoning compliance application of Rainy LLC to convert vehicle repair base to retail use and never redesign this. Please mute your lines if you're not speaking.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, Jim Wen, for the record, this property is at the corner of Stratfield Road and Fairfield Woods Road. It's presently a mobile station with three repair bays. This proposal is to convert those repair bays to retail convenience goods. They are proposing to install new storefront windows with brick to match the existing facade. There was a variance granted by the Zoning Board of Appeals earlier this month to reduce the required parking from 15 spaces to eight. The way that plays out is for gasoline in retail. You need five spaces for gas plus one per 200 square feet for the retail, so 2,000 square feet, that translates to 10 for the convenience store plus five for the gas. There's eight compliant parking spaces, but there's also six room for six cars to be parked at the pumps. So for a total of really 14, we don't count the spaces, but if you, you know, if you pump gas and then run in for a gallon of milk, you're generally not moving your car. So there's a total of 14 capacity out of the 15. That is the nature of the application. I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. And this is on for compliance, right? So otherwise, the application meets with all of our regulations?
Correct. With the exception of the parking issue that was resolved by the ZBA, that is correct.
Right. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Noonan? Motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Very good. Can I have a second? Second by Commissioner Corcoran. Thank you. Commissioner Noonan, any comments or questions?
No, based on staff's recommendation, well, the statement that it's compliance and the ZBA variance addresses the parking. No reason to deny.
Very good. Commissioner Corcoran?
I agree. Nothing further.
Thank you. I agree. This is pretty straightforward. Anyone else have any comments?
Does it still have the two driveways, one from Fairfield Woods and one from Stratfield Road?
Yes, yes. The site plan is not proposing to change at all. It's just removing the repair bays and doing some interior work, but the site plan remains unchanged.
Looks like there are three curb cuts, one on Fairfield Woods Road and two on Stratfield Road.
That's correct. There's an island between the two.
Yeah.
Stratfield curbs.
Yeah. Anyone else? Okay, motion is to approve. All in favor, say aye or raise your hand. Aye. Any opposed? Well, that's unanimous. So there are no opposed and no abstentions. The compliance is approved unanimously. The next item is our public hearing. So for members of the public who have joined for that, we will first hear from the applicant presenting their their application. We'll then have a period of public comment. If you'd like to be heard on one item, 801 Post Road, please just, you can sign up in the chat box and we will call people in the order that they've signed up. I will also make a general call for comments for anyone that hasn't signed up in the chat. Once we're finished with public comment, the applicant will have a rebuttal opportunity, and then once they're done with rebuttal, the public hearing will be closed on that application. So with that, I'll call the, and we only have one item on public hearing, and that's 801 Post Road, special permit application of Samuel Gardner, architect pertaining to additions and alterations to establish a restaurant use of the design commercial business. Who is here on that application?
Hi, good evening. Sam Gardner.
Hello, Mr. Gardner. We can hear you, although your voice is breaking up a little bit for me. Emmeline, did you, how did it come through for you?
The same. It's breaking up a little bit, and I don't know whether, you know, I would ask the other commissioners once Mr. Gardner starts to speak, if you could just make sure that you're muted. It might be a little bit of feedback or something like that.
Yeah, let's give it a shot. Mr. Gardner, I'll mute as well, but I'll come back to you if we have problems hearing you, okay?
Okay, you let me know how it goes.
Terrific. Thank you.
I'm an architect. My address is 390 Ridgefield Road in Wilton, Connecticut. This application is proposing to convert an existing automobile service station constructed in 1960, located at 801 Post Road. It's going to be converted into a gas station-themed pizza restaurant called Pizza Co. The existing building is situated on a non-conforming lot at the corner of the Post Road and South Benson Road in a designed commercial district. Both the lot and the existing structure do not meet the requirements of Section 12.7. However, we did apply for and received variances from the Town of Fairfield Zoning Board of Appeals for both parking and setbacks. The project involves converting the existing one-story structure of approximately 1,200 square feet into a restaurant. It'll have a one-story kitchen addition of about 374 square feet on the east side and a seasonal dining porch, which means it's open air on the west side. There's also an exterior walk-in refrigerator sort of right up against the east addition, which is located adjacent to the kitchen addition. It sits on a concrete slab and will be surrounded by an eight-foot-high fence. I realized I launched into my presentation without introducing who's here to also answer questions and present. Jimmy Zamo is the engineer. He is part of the team. Declan Mahar and Jordan Bochanis are the operators of Pizza Co., and their attorney, John Bochanis, is here as well. Okay, I'll continue. The site plan will accommodate up to 10 parking spaces, including one ADA space. There are two existing curb cuts on Post Road, which will be upgraded to establish a one-way drive aisle, sort of an in-and-out of traffic flow. And the existing curb cut along South Benson Road will be closed and blocked with concrete planters. The engineer, Jimmy Zamo, has designed a subsurface stormwater infiltration system under the parking area to meet the requirements of the Town of Fairfield stormwater retention. And we also, you know, the plan is to, we are in a flood zone, and the building and the additions will be upgraded to meet flood-resistant standards. All MEP equipment will be lifted above the floodplain level as required. We're you know, in addition to the new parking plan and the new curb cut plan, we are going to light the site with three post lights. We submitted the photometrics on that so that, to show that we're not lighting our neighbors at all. And we're going to have landscape, areas of landscaping on the site, which is in our landscape plan. I think that's generally it. Do you want me to share anything in terms of a screen to to give you some visuals?
So we do have all of well, presumably what you're offering, we have in our packet.
Right.
Might be helpful if you would like to show us the site plan or the
Okay. I'll do that.
The rendering of the business. I will, I would like for you to talk a little bit about the parking, if you would. I think that that we got some documents in. I looked at the variance application and the variance that was granted, as well as because correspondence from those who supported the application at ZBA, but then withdrew that for the purposes of this application. So, I mean, in a nutshell, it appears that at ZBA, your argument to confirm a variance from 20 spaces to 10 was that you'd secured arrangements with adjacent or area property owners to provide or lease you 10 other spaces. The funeral home and across in the Bob shopping center.
Yeah, those that has changed, but let me, I'm gonna introduce Declan Mahar to speak to the various agreements we have.
Okay, great. Declan, walk me through that. Yep.
Declan, you'll have to unmute yourself.
I did.
Oh, good. There you are.
Yes, we have an agreement with Nextdoor Fuzzy's spot, which is the business of Waves and Lux Hair and Coloring, and they have 10 spots there, which is right adjacent to ours. And it's not open in the evening hours.
Okay, and do you have that as a written agreement or a letter or a lease or something like that? I'm sorry, Mr. Mahar, if you're trying to answer, we can't hear you. Still not hearing anything.
All right, hit the back.
Yes, there we are. So do you have that arrangement reduced to writing in a letter or a lease or something like that?
Yes, we do, and that was submitted as well. That has not changed at all.
All seeing that. We'll figure that out at another juncture, I guess. Mr. Wen, maybe you can take a look through that?
20th, 21.
We, I forwarded those letters.
Here in color, located at 801, located at 25 South Benson.
Okay. Very good.
So, Mr. Chairman, Jim Wen, for the record, I believe that that letter that Declan is referring to was amongst the correspondence that was submitted probably earlier this morning, along with the minutes of other correspondence from others. So there was, there was a fairly sizable packet that went out this morning.
I see that now, from February, from January 20, 21. Willing to allow use of our off-street parking after our normal business hours. What are the normal business hours of?
Normally, it will be 12 o'clock or lunch until closing, which in Fairfield is usually 11 to 12 o'clock.
So the hours of Waves, Lux, Hair and Color is from noon until 11 or 12 o'clock, Monday through Friday?
Oh, I thought you were talking about the restaurant hours because I couldn't hear you. Though Lux is open early in the morning till about 4 or 5 o'clock.
Okay. And so what was the significance of the Spear Miller withdrawal then, if you had the 10 spaces there? And it's withdrawal of the other, the other agreements for?
There was no other agreement other than the Spear Miller. I had contacted Steve Warren that has the Bob's Lot, and we never got an agreement because he has a pizza place opening over there that is catering and pizza and a few other things, an Italian kitchen, I think it's called. So he did not want to give us an agreement to compete with himself. And he has an agreement currently with Spear Miller, and he put the pressure on Spear Miller to pull the agreement.
Right, okay. So this letter from Wave, Lux, Hair and Color, I think, I appreciate what it says and what you're telling me. I think that needs to be a little bit more than what it is. It doesn't identify a number of spaces. It doesn't identify the hours of the parking arrangement, for example. And so I would ask that you amplify that a little bit.
We can amplify that, but that was brought up at the Zoning Board of Appeals and approved.
Yeah, no worries. And I'm not, I'm not suggesting that the relation, that the arrangement is problematic, but I just don't think that the writing reflects what you're, the extent of what you're telling me. That they have 10 spots, that the hours are, you know, X to Y, Monday through Friday, and so forth.
Yes, I can get it, you know, broadened for you, but basically, like I said, we already got the variance.
I understand you got the variance, and the variance was I understand you got the variance. And the variance was predicated, and what I see was predicated on the fact that you had arrangements to secure ten spaces. From other, other parking lots. And you, you, you had that confirmed in, in certain other writings that have since been withdrawn. And if you've got disagreement with Waves and that's got ten spaces and it accomplishes the same thing, then I agree with you that. That they're likely, you know, that this, this takes the place. So I just would ask that you amplify that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Very good. Does anybody else have any questions along the, the, the parking issues for the applicant? The variance, the, the agreements, parking shares or anything like that?
Is ten spaces on site going to be enough from noon to five when Lux closes?
I, I believe it will be. Our other location in Stratford, it's not a big lunch. In, in-house, it's more takeout for businesses in the area. So it's, it's more a pickup and takeout at lunchtime.
And is there parking on, on the street, adjacent to, to the, the business?
No. There's no parking on. South Benson or Post Road.
So where would the closest place that someone would park if they came to is the restaurant? And all ten spaces were filled with employees and customers?
Well, we could walk through if, if needed, and there's room in the Lux, because again, they're, you know, one-off parkings. For, you know, a number of chairs, three or four chairs.
I'm sorry, can you say that again? I didn't, I didn't quite catch that.
They, they can walk right through the parking lot. To Lux Parking.
You're saying that during the, the other hours that your, your patrons would.
Between twelve and five?
Correct. If, if the lot is full with employees and customers, what is the closest? That a, a, a customer could park their car? Where, where would they have to go?
Well. If they, if they have room in Lux, they could park there, but other than that, we have our parking as well. And again, you know, from our other location, we have a very light lunch business. It's almost all. Pickup at lunch.
Anybody else have any questions about parking? All right. You, thank you very much. And so. Mr. Gardner and, and, and your crew, please go ahead if you have anything more to present.
You know, the only thing I would do is just walk you through the documents that we. Do the site plan. With you. There's some renderings of what it would look like. You know, converting the, the old service station into the Pizzaco brand. I could share that or, or just direct you to the package that, that you have.
Well, it's all part of the record. I, we, we've all certainly reviewed the documents that have been submitted, so that, that's really up to you. I mean.
Are you seeing this?
We are.
Oh, awesome. It worked. Okay. So this is the station as is. Without the additions on either side. This is what it would. Look like, you know, in, in a way, if you. I don't, I don't know if you're familiar with the Pizzaco in Stratford, but we took a station that had been sort of. Covered up over the years with wood siding and restored it to, you know, a, sort of a nineteen forties. Era gas station. And this station turned out, it was kind of lucky that it, it was. A lot of the existing nineteen sixties look was what we were looking for. So. Were able to. You know, to renovate it. You know, to propose that it would look like this. Here's some of the type of images that we use for our design. You know, there will be old. Gas fillers and, and. You know, a lot of the signage will sort of recall this era of. Gas stations. And then. I'm skipping the lighting. I, I guess, unless you guys have questions about that. But, and I'm going to the engineering plan. Oh, there is bike parking on the site, by the way.
Excellent.
Just going to try to flip this for you guys. So here's the, the engineer drawing, okay? So, you know, you're seeing the, the, the original. Gas station, service station. This is the addition here. To the east. This is the porch. To the west, and, and that is the, the walk-in refrigerator. Which is basically abutted directly to the kitchen. You, you put a hole in your. Your wall, essentially, so that you can access the. The, the walk-in. You don't leave the restaurant to go into the walk-in.
And so you're expanding the footprint of the, of the existing building by, by a little, by the, the, the walk-in, the. The, the expansion as well as the porch.
That is correct.
Are you, are you removing parking spaces in the process of doing that?
Well, you know, the site is fully paved. I don't, maybe there's a little grass along South Benson, very little. Because it was, I guess it was ripped up around here for, you know, the, when they took out the gas tanks and everything. So the site is, is almost completely paved currently as it sits. So we're going to try to re-green up the, the South Benson edge and bring it around to the front. But all this parking is basically new, you know. It's like an open lot. I, I'm guessing that when it was operating, they, they just stored cars here that were being. Used, you know, that were being repaired. Before they brought them into the, the repair bays. But the South Benson curb cut was open and there were curb cuts on here, but there. I don't know if you can see these dotted lines. They were far larger. You know, we brought them down to the required minimum and they're going to be improved. Sidewalks are going to be improved, planting edge here. Plantings all around the edges here, really just to green up the site and soften it. You know, the purpose of our, our zoning variance was because. The building itself, you know, faulted all the setbacks and was right up against the, the rear property line. So that's what we were essentially extending with our additions. And that's, that's what they gave us a variance for.
Very good. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Gardner on the site plan? I can only see a couple of videos. Yes, Commissioner Bremen.
Is there any need for any environmental remediation of the site?
As I, I think, again, Declan can speak to that, but I believe that all the remediation has occurred.
Yes, and we included a copy of that as well.
Yes, so the answer is yes. It's been remediated.
I have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
So I noticed the floor plan, but are there, do you have any elevations?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I was just going to those. You anticipated my move. Do, do you want to look at the floor plan or do, would you like me to go directly to the?
Yes.
Okay, the floor plan, I looked it over.
Okay, so you're good with the floor plan? So I am.
I would like to look at it.
Okay, yeah, because, you know, we're. Everything's linear, so here we are. Okay, so the main entrance is right here. We are, we are going to have a small ramp, because the whole thing is going to sit up. Above the, the grade of the parking lot. The, the reception is basically here, also where takeout would be expedited to. There's a small dining room here. A bar about sixteen feet across. And then you would go out a door to the outdoor porch. Here's two handicap bathrooms, unisex. And. The. The, the rest is the kitchen, basically. And back of house, there's, the pizza oven will reside in this, this back half here. So the original, again, the original. Service station is this footprint right here that I'm outlining. This is the addition. This represents the, the walk-in. Okay. And then I'm going to carry on to the elevation. Oops. So here's, oops, I went too far. Here's a black line elevation of the front, the street front. Here's the, the porch. So it's open air. It's going to have posts. Relating to kind of like a, a stone-half wall. And then over on this side, this is the addition. There are windows that are picking up on the. You know, the new, we're going to replace the, the garage doors with new insulating aluminum. But glass garage doors, overhead doors. We're keeping this part of the facade pretty much as is. We'll do whatever improvements we need to do to make it waterproof. And then the addition is going to have some windows that will sort of pick up on the image of, of the garage doors. And this is the fence. It's an eight-foot-high fence around the. The, the walk-in refrigerator. So we're, we're trying to totally obscure how it looks. And this, this, these are the side views. So you're seeing. You know, there will be a, let's call it a delivery door or kitchen door, separate of coming through the restaurant. And that's the fence surrounding the, the walk-in. And this is the open porch, which is really just replicating the, the pediment and the roof line of the. Existing. Service station. And I guess that would, that would be it. I don't know if you have any questions for?
Yeah, I have a little bit more. So on that front elevation on the left.
Yeah.
There's a large window. So when I look at the floor plan, it seems to be a wall.
Well, some of it's going to be. It could be fake. You know, at the time, we were still messing around with the floor plan. So. You know, the intention is to try to get some windows in, into. You know, here. Or here. This is, this is part of the open pickup area to the, you know, for takeout and to, to pay. Well, actually, you wouldn't pay. It's really takeout, honestly. It's, it's wait service. So the windows would reside in this, this wall. So the elevations are just sort of suggesting. Where we would put windows.
I'm just continuing to look.
Sure. I can't tell what you're seeing. Do you see the whole plan or just partial?
Well, I can look at it on my own screen.
Got it.
So. So I guess we're. What you're saying is that you're going to use the sort of classic service station theme, but we don't know exactly what this one's going to look like.
Well, I think, you know, the, the earlier. Sort of photo montage that was put together. Was to give you, sorry, I hope I'm not giving you guys vertigo here.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is that, I mean, I, I, I'm, I like this concept, but usually we, when we get elevations there. They're of the building that we plan to see. And these, they seem to be preliminary.
Well, I guess I would agree with that. I mean, we tried to portray as best we could. This rendering is pretty. Pretty accurate to, to where we want to go with it. The doors will look like that, the basic signage and elevation of the existing. And, you know, this is giving a notion of, of how we want to handle the. The area, which is, I guess we're calling the takeout area and the, that small office that's there.
So with this, with this rendering, there's no, there's no covered area, whereas in those other.
Right, right.
Right, so you're not planning on having a, a, a covered area with pumps, right?
No, no, not at all. Right, no.
I just wanted to confirm.
Yeah, the, the precedent, we're really just to help you sort of see where we were getting our, our inspiration.
Sure.
And, no, I mean, it's more like how, how a pediment is handled. You know, how end elevations, you know, when you see all these gas pumps. When I said they were going to be gas pumps, they're just going to sit against the building and, and sort of be decorative.
Right, understood. Okay.
Give the idea of, of an old gas station.
Yeah, all right. Anyone have any other questions?
Yep.
Commissioner Francis.
Now, i- is this going to be accessible? With, I guess you said there's just one step up. Are you going to have a railing?
It's going to be comparable to what you would call a curb ramp. You know, when you have it at a corner of a sidewalk in a street, you know, a crosswalk. It's a very, it's only a, of a six-inch. Grade change. So a railing isn't required.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions? I can only see a couple of screens, so you have to speak up. Maybe you could stop sharing your screen, Mr..
Yeah, good idea, good idea. Of course, I have to figure out how to do that.
You did it. Excellent.
Someone did it for me.
All right. So any other commissioners have any other questions for Mr. Gardner before we move on here? Commissioner Braun.
Yes. I apologize, I came a little late. The extra parking that the neighboring business was offering, that's the one on the brick building. To the east, not Spear, because we got a letter from Spear saying that they weren't offering any parking. And you've probably already covered this, so I apologize.
It, it, it's actually the, the hairdress salon, which is directly behind. The restaurant, proposed restaurant.
Post Road towards Bridgeport, right?
Gives you an access.
Been in the same building?
From South Benson. No, it's not along Post Road. It's. They're, they're behind along South Benson.
I see, yeah, I see the building. And they have definitely given you a letter agreement that.
Yes.
Yeah, we, we, we went over this.
Yeah. But the, the chair has asked for just better definition in terms of an agreement, so we'll work on that.
Number of. Number of units, hours, and so forth.
Right, exactly.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Letter from Laura Bulley addressing a bunch of things that came today. Including parking, adequate parking area for turning around. Are these covered by the the variance, the fact that they're not standard parking spaces?
You know, Jimmy Zumo is hopefully still on to address that.
Hi, James Zumo, Land Surveying Services, project manager. I'll help you out with this one. Yep, in a lovely fashion, as we always get his eleventh hour comments. Me and Laura had a conversation around three o'clock about everything. And a lot of the engineering comments are addressable. I am, I have an engineer that I work with that will be providing us with maneuverings for cars through AutoCAD that will be able to demonstrate the cars being able to access and exit the building, which I then, you know, will set or access those parking spaces, which I I hopefully I'll be able to send over to her and get a favorable favorable recommendation in regards to those parking spaces. But we did review those comments. We are in the process of addressing them. Again, we got them very late in the day today. If if we need to move things around, we might possibly need to move things around, I mean, in regards to parking.
Okay. It seems that we don't have a completed application yet.
Well, to be honest, we received these comments today, I'm gonna say around four o'clock. So it was hard to resolve them with town engineering. So I mean, you can so up till four o'clock, I guess, we we assumed we had a completed application.
Okay, well, I have to look at that. And, you know, just I'll have to follow up on those open items. I mean, she does raise, and I didn't would have asked you about this, issues regarding the the parking and maneuvering and all and so forth. So you 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 believe you can demonstrate a response to this that's satisfactory?
I I believe, yes, I I do believe, but I I don't have anything in hand. Again, it was very late. I can't, I can't speak to it. I do believe we can get something in hand to to show her that the spaces are maneuverable. Again, it's just kind of tough to speak on.
Yeah, yeah, each of us, we started to look at it right away when we saw this. And and we do believe there's a solution, but we we'd have to graphically present it to her.
Right, okay. All right. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Gardner and your team. All right. So at this time, I'll put this over to public comments. Ms. Harrigan, we have anyone signed up?
Yep, we have Bart Stanko, who would like to speak first. Barring any other speakers, Attorney Green has asked to go last.
Sure, Mr. Stanko.
No comments at this time. I think their their questions have already been addressed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other members of the public wish to be heard on this item? Okay, not seeing any hands. I'm not hearing anything. Okay, so.
We have one question.
Did someone come into the, come into, up in the chat?
I have a question about the parking. So the
Can you just please state your name and town for the record, please?
David Grinley, Fairfield.
Thank you.
Just a question about the parking, because you 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 were asking a question earlier, and I don't think we ever really got an answer on it. So if they, if the lot is filled at the pizza place and the lot is filled at the hairdress place, you are asking where people would park otherwise, and no answer was really given, other than oh, we would park in those spaces that were discussed. But what if they're all filled up? You know, is this gonna be something where then they spill over to the Bob's parking lot or across the street to Sunny Days or, you know, I I I just don't feel like we ever really gotten any true answer on that. And it's hard to say that hey, it's never gonna happen.
Okay, thank you for that. And to the extent the applicant wants to respond, they can do that on their rebuttal. You may have gotten the best answer that they have, but so, any other members of the public? Should be heard here. Ms. Harrigan?
I just, I don't see anybody else adding in the chat. I think it's Attorney Green.
Okay. Attorney Green?
I I see, just before I begin, I see Mr. Stanko on the chat saying he had a response, but I'm I'm happy to address the commission up to whatever the chair likes.
Well, if he, he'd like to talk, then he can certainly has the the opportunity to speak. He just said that he didn't. Maybe now he does.
I think, yeah, I do. I thank you on that. I just wanted to comment on the parking. There is additional parking behind Sunny Days.
Yeah, can you just put your name in for the record? And are you represented by Mr. Green, Attorney Green?
No.
Okay, very good. Okay, just.
This is Bart Stanko from Fairfield, resident of Fairfield, also a member of Beacon Hill Realty Holding on that. And there is parking or on-street parking behind Sunny Days, so just across the street.
Excellent. On-street parking behind Sunny Days?
Yes.
Thank you for that information. Anything else?
No, that's it. Thank you.
All right, terrific. Attorney Green, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission staff. My name is Joel Green. I practice law in Bridgeport with the Law Offices of Green and Gross, and it's my pleasure to appear before you on behalf of Post Benson Corporation, who operates the Fairfield Shopping Center at 837 Post Road, which is some of you have referred to already this evening as the Bob's Center. I had provided some exhibits to the commission, and I will try to move my presentation along because the presentation by the applicant was relatively brief. But I guess my initial question through you, Mr. Chair, is if the applicant is planning to amend their plan, do does the commission want to hear from my client this evening, or do you want me to defer? I'm happy to present. I'm happy to defer. I'll do whatever the commission pleases, but it it sounds like the site plan is going to be revised and I just wonder whether I should do it twice.
So I I I don't know that. You know, we we did have some comments last minute from Ms. Bulley. The applicant needs to address those in some fashion. If that results in a change to the application of the site plan, that might have implications relative to the public hearing, might have implications relative to the application as a whole. I can't answer that question. You need to decide how you wish to proceed.
Well, the commission, is the, is it the intent of the commission to hold the public hearing open?
It was not mine.
All right, well, then I'm happy to proceed.
The applicant hasn't asked for us to hold the the hearing open?
All right, well, I I'll proceed happily. And so to begin with, Ms. Harrigan, if you could call up exhibit number one, which is just to orient the commission on the location. I know that you're familiar with it, but I just wanted to for the record, sort of show the relationship of the properties. And I know this is a rather high-level view, and I appreciate your zooming on it. And but it's in the record. And basically, you can see from this level, the intersection of South Benson Road and Route One, you can see the parking lot, my client's parking lot, which is shown here. You can see the 801 property. So we're directly across the street. You can also note on the exhibit that there's a, and this was taken from Bing Maps, but you can see that there's a fairly long line of cars queued up heading northbound on South Benson Road, which I'm going to address because it speaks volumes to this application. And frankly, sometimes it is a problem to leave my client's shopping center as you drive across the front on the the aisle along the front stores of my clients of the center. And you'd want to take a left turn onto South Benson. It's sometimes a problem because traffic does stack up there. And, you know, it's interesting because that intersection's been largely improved, and you have two lanes of Post Road going each way, and you have an expanded the south end of North Benson Road has obviously been expanded to three lanes coming out, which has helped. But that's a, that can be a challenging intersection, even with those improvements. And as the applicant has conceded, there is no parking on Post Road in that area. There is no parking on South Benson Road. And there is no parking on North Benson Road, north of the intersection. So it's, it's a challenging area. And basically, there is no on-street parking available. I I heard Mr. Stanko's comments. I haven't analyzed whether that road behind behind Sunny Days is a town road or not, but I note that it is a considerable distance from the site. So you're aware of the, and you can, that the drawing can come down now. So you're that you can close out of that if you'd like. So you're aware of the ZBA application, and it's sort of a, I'm still kind of at a loss as to how a variance was granted and how hardship was found, but certainly it happened. And, you know, we accept that. There were, however, representations made in the course of that hearing regarding agreements with adjacent property owners. And the first thing that I really want to bring to the commission's attention is that joint parking arrangements are not permitted in the Design Commercial District, meaning that under our zoning regulations and specifically section, and I have it, I have an exhibit on it. I believe it's 28.11. There is no there I have, yes, I have it as an exhibit. There are no joint parking arrangements permitted in that district. So having permission to use another property violates the zoning regulations. And, you know, uses in that zone are subject to a special permit or special exception. And you cannot, as part of your special exception, ask to either half-parking from an adjacent site or to use parking on an adjacent site under our zoning regulations.
So to that end, and this is why I asked the applicant about these relationships, you know, during their presentation. As you just recited, I acknowledged that there were certain representations made in the application that they had arrangements, you know, to provide ten spaces. But the variance itself simply grants a reduction in the number of spaces from 20 to 10. And I'm wondering what your position and argument is with respect to that, vis a vis the necessity for them to actually have those parking share, those sharing, those are those arrangements for the the other 10 parking spaces on on other properties.
So I've struggled with that question because it does simply say reduction from 20 to 10 for your purpose. And as I view it, certainly, the commission, the Zoning Board of Appeals, was presented with this notion that there were these agreements. In fact, there is not, there can't be an agreement of that kind. And at the very worst, I think that this application would be susceptible to some sort of inequitable claim. If there wasn't an adequate claim at law, for example, regarding the shared parking arrangement. In other words, if it could be found that hardship was found independent. And so so for, but, you know, and I thought about that, Mr. Chairman, and I also thought that you might ask me this. And the other thing I will say is, and I'll get into the standards for special exception and for special permit. And it speaks in terms of traffic safety and parking, in terms of findings you have to make, and impacts on the area and on neighboring properties. So I will address that later in my presentation, but I am mindful of the very question that you ask. We believe that, we believe that the ZBA, it's sort of inconceivable that the ZBA could look at this application and simply say, sort of, I wouldn't say willy-nilly, but casually that we're going to waive half of the parking required without some reliance on the fact that adjacent properties would have been used to pick up the parking for this use. So that's where we stand on that. But in any event, as I indicated, joint parking is not permitted. As as the chair had referenced, Spear Miller has withdrawn its consent to such an arrangement. But I, and but I want to address one, go just a little bit deeper. As to 25 South Benson Road, the adjacent property, the there's a letter from a tenant who operates this, a hair salon. Now, the first thing I will tell you is that the hair salon is open, for example, Wednesdays and Thursdays from 10 to 7. So certainly, that cuts into prime-time dining for use such as this. It's open, and I just, I just pulled this off of Google when the question was asked, and nine to five on Fridays and and that kind of thing. So there is that. But there is no authority, even if, even if you could have a joint parking arrangement in in this zone, which you can't, there's no authority in our regulations for a tenant to enter into such an arrangement. And our joint parking regulation makes specific reference to an owner granting that permission and not, doesn't refer to tenants. It says owner in the regulation.
Is it, the tenant may have sublease rights over the, over the parking in the lot, no?
May, but the regulation says owner. And I, so I don't know what the arrangement is. And equally significantly, the applicant has not sort of provided that basis, you know, sort of the, sort of the basis for that and said, well, this tenant has authority. I would also submit that the hair salon, according to the assessor's field card, which I put into the record, and sort of move this along. I'm gonna describe some of these exhibits that are in the record without necessarily calling them up, just to move this along. But we, I put into evidence the field card for 25 South Benson Road. And it shows that it has 816 square feet of retail space on the first floor. And retail calls for 200 feet, I'm sorry, one space per 200 feet. So the first floor would require four, would require five spaces. And this is regarding the property next door. It would require five spaces. And I don't know how salons are, are whether, so the field card says retail. I note that it's a salon. I note that business or professional offices are one per 250 feet. So I would submit to the commission that just for the first floor use next door, you need either four or five spaces. Now, the field card indicates that the second floor of the building at 25 South Benson Road has 756 square feet of office. And under, under the regulations, that would require four spaces. So And under, under the regulations, that would require four spaces, so. Under that analysis, they would need eight or nine spaces for the existing uses next door. Now, Emmeline, if you can call up um Exhibit Eight, which is an aerial photo um of twenty-five South Benson Road. There we go. Uh, I counted using the aerial photo and I'm incredibly uh. There we are. So there's a total of uh five spaces across the easterly or northeastern boundary of that property. There's two spaces behind the property. And there is arguably, potentially uh. Well, I don't think it is a space right here, I don't know if you can see my cursor. But uh, right in front, there's a little bit of an asphalt area. Which is, I believe in the town right of way, so I question whether that's a space, but. My point is, at present, there's only seven spaces. At twenty-five South Benson Road. Um, I, I looked at the site and this is exactly what I observed uh last week. So I would submit that there are no uh. There, there's no extra parking uh at twenty-five South Benson to accommodate this use. So uh, that is not. Going to provide any relief, nor can it under our zoning regulations. So as we've indicated, there is a waiver of ten spaces, the applicant is presenting ten spaces on their site plan. And I just want to highlight a few things. First of all, on the floor plan for the restaurant. The applicant shows in the main dining room, there are seven tables and twelve bar stools. In the main dining area, outdoors, there are eight tables. So there's a total of fifteen tables, twelve bar stools plus a takeout area. The applicant shows seating for seventy-six people. In this restaurant. So that's seating for seventy-six. The applicant indicates that it would require staffing of seven employees, that's eighty-three people on this site. And there are ten parking spaces, including one accessible space. So nine regular spaces and one accessible space provided on this site plan. There's also a separate takeout area. And I suppose through you, Mr. Chair, I'm, I would ask the applicant, sort of what percentage of their business is takeout? And the applicant had indicated that uh, there was a takeout um aspect and takeout component that was. Uh, predominant during the day, but I think it might be uh. Informative for the commission to know what the percentage of business is. Takeout and then also on top of that, what percentage of the business is um Uber Eats and Grubhub? Which um, I know that the applicant offers as well, so I think that. Through you, Mr. Chair, I would ask that question.
They can address that on rebuttal?
Uh, currently we're.
Well, Mr. Gardner, you can wait till your rebuttal, um.
Understood.
Okay, thanks. No problem.
So, so I guess the point is uh. The point is, it's, I think it's clear to everyone. It should be clear that with no on-street parking effectively, with no parking arrangements on any other properties, nor is it permitted. Having ten parking spaces on this site is just so grossly inadequate. For this business and, you know, and I've got to say this. Uh, certainly, we all want to see this site redeveloped. And I wish Pizza Co. well. But I, I can't help but think. That this is not the way to start off a relationship for a business in Fairfield. And just not the solution for this site, ten spaces. So in addition to eighty, you know, seating for seventy-six, seven employees. Uber Eats, Grubhub and people coming for takeout. How do you deal with deliveries of products uh by purveyors? How do you deal with trash removal? All of this adds up to serious problems at certainly one of the busy intersections. And I mean, on, at a corner property at one of the busiest intersections in our town. And it is problematical. And that's before there's any issues with I ninety-five, and once again, this intersection can be a challenge. Um, it is wide open, but it is a problem, particularly on South Benson. Now, uh, joining us tonight uh is um. Steve Warren, who is the, a principal of Post Benson Corp., uh, the owner and operator of the Fairfield Shopping Center and. Um, I know he just wanted a moment to address the commission, so. What I'd like to do is introduce Steve right now and then I can get into some of the nuts and bolts on the site plan after Steve has made some remarks. Uh, if that's permissible to you, Mr. Chairman.
Of course, please go.
Hello?
Yes. Welcome.
Hello, good evening, can you hear me?
Uh, we cannot see you. Uh, we, we can hear you, although you are breaking up just a little bit, but um. Why don't you go ahead and I, I will let you know if there's any problem.
Sure. Okay, uh, I'm not sure. But I'll, I'll do my best. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and. Give me an opportunity to speak, my name is Steve Warren. We are a management company for the. By Post Benson Corporation. I'm also vice president and the director of Post Benson Corporation. Um, Mr. Albert Phelps uh constructed this shopping center in nineteen fifty-five. Um, he's maintained ownership and management of the property for sixty-five years. I don't believe in, in the last sixty-five years, uh, he's objected to any development in the site, being a developer himself. Including the Merit Seven Corporate Park. Um, and the old Fairfield uh Motor Inn and other properties uh that you folks may be familiar with. Uh, Mr. Phelps is still alive and he lives in uh Florida. And he is very upset about this application and he asked me to hire Joel. Uh, and to give our opinion. I just wanted to give you a little bit of background. Uh, if, if I might, regarding the parking problems that we've had at the shopping center. Let me, let me talk about the good, good issues first. We have always been a good neighbor. We've allowed the use of our shopping center parking for uh the town of Fairfield, for municipal uses, for parade uses. Uh, when the park across the street needs maintenance, the vehicles park in our parking lot. Uh, we have the police department presence uh with cars in the, in the parking lot. Uh, always, uh, so. If there's anything the town ever needed or wanted, uh, we've always worked with the town for the past sixty-five years. Um, we pay approximately three hundred thousand dollars every year. For real estate taxes, sewer. And uh, that three hundred thousand dollars. Is reimbursed to us by our tenants, so effectively our tenants are paying rent. Including the three hundred thousand dollars for the parking lot that we use. And they want their parking for their clients, their customers, and uh, they're entitled to that. We hire cleaning services. Uh, that sweep the parking lot every night. Up until the uh pandemic, every single night, for the last decades, we've had that parking lot swept. Um, we have allowed Spear Miller Funeral Home, who is our neighbor. Uh, use of our parking lot when there are um wakes uh that are in excess capacity for their parking. We don't want the people parking on Benson, we don't want people parking on the old Post Road. We don't want people parking, obviously, anywhere on, on the street in that neighborhood. So we allow them to park in our parking lot. We've had a good relationship with Spear Miller, our neighbors. Um, Mr., I'm going to try to say this uh tactfully, but there was a representation by the applicant a few minutes ago, Mr. Declan Mahar, that we did not agree to give them parking arrangements in our parking lot because of the competition of a pizza restaurant in our shopping center. The fact is that. We were never approached. By the applicant. About the zoning board of appeals application, never. We'd not uh, uh, entertain any questions regarding parking, and the reason I would surmise is that Mr. Mr. Um, Mahar knew that if he asked us for a parking arrangement, the answer would be no. For a hundred different reasons, not competition. We don't want uh the adjoining property owner using our parking lot, and it's not permitted under the zoning regulations. Uh, he, my first contact with Mr. Mahar, and I'm, again, I'm going to try to be calm about this, was. After the zoning board of appeals approved the variances, I contacted Jim Went. And asked what was going on with these parking arrangements, who these adjacent parking uh arrangements were with and could I have copies of them? And he said, well, why don't I have Mr. Mahar contact you? Which he did, and I had a phone conversation with Mr. Mahar, and I asked him for copies of the parking agreements, because where I come from. If you have a parking arrangement, it's a long-term, non-revocable parking arrangement. Because a tenant who gives an agreement could be out tomorrow. It has to be long-term, non-revocable. And within a certain distance of the site and. You know, at that point, I didn't even know that it wasn't permitted in the zone. Joel um, uh, has enlightened me on that and has enlightened the commissioners. So we have had in the last twenty years, one car towed out of our parking lot. Maritime Chevrolet told their employees to park in our parking lot. And I put uh stickers on cars, not, not damaging stickers, but just, you know, paper saying. These are for the Fairfield Shopping Center, and they're invited. And one gentleman continued to, you know, that said you shouldn't park three times. I had it towed. That's the only car we've ever towed out of the parking lot. I'm sure the commissioners were aware that there was a tremendous problem uh that we have with parking the beach. Beach parking is uh, the way it works in Fairfield, you probably know, is four or five people come to the Fairfield Shopping Center and they leave their cars. And they get into one car. So four cars stay in our lot, one car goes to the beach with five people. This summer, the town. Realizing the problem helped us out and they put, the town put a sign at the entrance on Benson, no beach parking. I came up on a Saturday. And a gentleman in a beautiful car parked next to the sign. Got out of the car in a bathing suit. And a beach chair and started to go out to walk to the beach, and I said, sir. Uh, this parking lot is rented to the Fairfield Shopping Center. And I will not use the four-letter words. That he uh addressed me with. Uh, but I can tell you, they were not pleasant. And as uh, you know, as an owner and I, and I said to him, sir, you know, we pay taxes on this property. Uh, there's a sign right there, our tenants uh really were upset with all this beach parking, the town has a sign, and he basically told me to, you know what? And that's, that's an issue uh that uh, that goes on every summer. We had, we have security guards patrol, you know what the people tell the security guards? Tow us. Now, I don't want to tow cars, I, I told you, I towed one car in the probably fifteen years, one. I will not tow those cars because I realize that there's issues that are community-based and I'm, and I don't want to tow cars. But I'm not going to have a pizza restaurant with ten parking spaces. Where they have seventy or eighty seats. With those people are not going to be parking in our parking lot, and Mr. Mahar should know better than to say that I wouldn't give them permission because we have a pizza restaurant. I am not going to clean up the mess from people. I'm, I'm going to deal with broken glass from bottles coming from their restaurant. It, uh, it's just an application in all, and I've been practicing law, I am also an attorney. For over forty years, I used to practice at Frank Zulo's Law Office in Norwalk. We did planning and zoning work all the time. I've never seen an application like this, I've never seen it presented this way. Uh, I know I'm getting upset and Joel said, stay cool, right, Joe? He said, stay cool. So I'm trying to stay cool. The Midas muffler people don't have enough parking. A couple of their employees asked me if they could park in our lot, I said, yes. The cleaners who. Left, uh, left about six months ago. Asked a couple of their employees, said, can we park in your lot? We don't have enough parking, I said, yes. Said, there are commuters. That park in our lot. There are golfers that park in our lot. It's not, it's not a public parking lot, but there's, there, but there's a point of breaking, and I'm, and I will be at the breaking point. If this, this application is approved and this restaurant opens up, because as Frank Zulo, my mentor, used to say. As night follows day, our parking lot is going to be this Pizza Co. parking lot. That's where the people are going to park, that, and I just wanted one, I want to end on one thing. When the. Tanks were removed from this site at eight oh one Post Road. I, I happened to be there, uh, because I haven't been there since the pandemic, but this was before the pandemic, I believe, and. Uh, uh, all of the construction equipment for the contractor. Remediating the site were parked in our parking lot. So I walked over and I said, what are you guys doing? They go, oh, we're working over across the street, eight oh one, I said, well, why don't you park over there? This is a Fairfield Shopping Center parking lot, and the answer was, well, there's no room over there for our equipment. Of course, there's not, there's no room there, it's a small triangular, non-conforming site. Uh, and that people are going to park in our parking lot as night follows day. So I'm sorry that I sound upset, but you know, uh, Mr. Phelps uh is ninety-seven years old, he turns ninety-eight. Uh, in December, and after sixty-five years of owning this shopping center, we've never had controversy like this before. And, and I would ask Mr. Mahar, if he finds it in his heart to confirm what I've said, I would appreciate that as a gentleman, the gentleman. Joel, I know I went overboard, I'm sorry. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you commissioners for your consideration.
Thank you for coming, thank you. Turning green? Chair on mute.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And you know, another issue is obviously liability for folks using the site at night and at all hours and leaving a bar and restaurant and uh. Coming over to Post Benson's uh property, so it, it presents. A- as I know the commission is cognizant of, it presents a lot of logistical and practical problems and upsets the tenants of, of my clients, so. But let's talk about the site plan. Uh, so the applicant is once again here before you seeking a special permit and a special exception, but. Uh, really, uh, this plan is uh defective and doesn't conform with the zoning regulations in a number of respects and. Uh, before we get to that, um, let's deal with some easy issues. First of all, uh, the site plan itself and um. Emmeline, if you could um call up the uh, the site plan, that would probably be helpful, the colored site plan. And if you'd like, I can do it or, you know, whatever you like. I think it's page uh fourteen of the uh. Of the, the original document. There we go. We, we can use that one if you'd like, that's fine. Uh, actually, so. Uh, this is a site, this is a site plan that I actually had marked up. Uh, but. I think the easy issue, and if you could just go to the upper left hand, well, before we do that, we can stay right where we are. First thing is uh. The site plan fails to reflect the true lot area, and in fact, the variance that the applicant obtained. Uh, the variance indicated that the uh minimum um area for a lot in the zone is ten thousand feet. And uh, ten thousand square feet, the applicant had specifically gotten a variance to reduce the. Uh, to show a non-conforming lot that's nine thousand six hundred and. to show a non-conforming lot that's 9,617 feet. That's reflected in the grid in the upper left-hand corner. We don't have to go there yet. But based upon section 31.2.21, which is the definition of lot area, and I have submitted that into the record as exhibit 15, the applicant failed to net out the area of the lot that was less than 37 and a half feet wide. And as you may recall, in our zoning regulations, the lot area definition nets out those portions of a lot which are less than one-half of the minimum square and have a close interior angle. And I would submit that this entire easterly or northeasterly portion, including out to space number four there, so this whole peninsula is, should be netted out of lot area so that the lot area is actually significantly smaller. The applicant did not obtain a variance for that, for the smaller lot area. So there, and I haven't, yes?
Show, show, show us that calculation. Which, which area are you specifically referring to as being the small angle in the northeast corner and being, and should be excluded from the?
So, oops.
Yeah, no, I know the regulation, I'm looking for the portion of the site plan.
Yeah, so we should go back to the site plan. We could, so right, so you'll see, and I don't know if you can see my cursor.
No, we can't. If Ms. Harrigan is controlling the screen share, then we can't see your cursor.
Okay, so this area of the site, the minimum square, and you can't see this portion of the drawing, but the minimum square in the zone is 75 feet. So you have to be able to accommodate a square of 75 feet. You're all familiar with that. The applicant indicated that the minimum square on this site is actually, the existing minimum square is 65. So the lot will accommodate a 65-foot square, but the required square is 75 feet. Half of that 75 feet is 37 and a half feet. So that portion of the site that is less than, that portion of the site that is less than 37 and a half feet and meets at an angle, I think, of 60 degrees or less, which this end of the site, the peninsula, meets at a tighter angle than that.
The 70, where it's shown 70 degrees?
Well, that's different, I'll, I'll get to that, but that's actually different. But if you were to take the, if you were to take the southerly boundary line of the property and the street line boundary and extend them to a point so that they form the end of a triangle, the angle between the rear property line and the street line is less than 60 degrees.
Yeah, that's, it appears to be something like 45 degrees.
Something like that. And so the point being that, and I just want to refer literally to the regulation, if you'll bear with me for just one moment. The regulation, so I have this right in the record. And I'm just referring to the definitions in our zoning regulations. So the lot area, and I've put that, it's in the record, but lot area, it says, "The area of any portion of a lot which has a width of less than 50% of the minimum lot square width in the district in which it is located shall not be included in lot area calculation. This provision is not intended to exclude the area between two intersecting property lines that meet at an angle equal to or greater than 60 degrees." So it's to eliminate narrow portions of sites. Now, there might be an agreement that they don't need.
So based upon your, your calculations, what specific area of the lot is should be excluded from the, from the number?
The, somewhere, I don't have a calculation of the number. But I know that approximately the middle of lot, of parking space, in the vicinity of, of the boundary line between parking spaces in three and four and extending to the post-road property line, that area should be netted out of lot area. Because it's less than, that is approximately the area where the lot becomes 37 and a half feet wide.
So, and that, and that would be all of the, the lot area from that dividing line?
To the east.
Site plan, to the left of the site plan.
To the east or northeast, correct? So there's that. Then, then there's a setback issue, and I show it along South Benson. You can see, and I'm referring to section 28.10 of the zoning regulations, requires a 10-foot setback for parking spaces from the street line. And you can see that parking spaces eight, nine, and 10 are located in the 10-foot setback. So the site plan is defective at that point. I also note, I should have noted this, but I didn't. When I measured it today, parking space 10 is also in the setback from the post-road, although I didn't provide the commission with a dimension line there. But it, parking lot, parking space number 10 encroaches into the 10-foot setback from?
Are these all, are your calculations all taking into consideration the variances that they received on the setback?
Correct, yes. Then, now, there is a provision, and I should state for the record, that there is a provision that, under certain circumstances, the commission can waive setback requirements. But first of all, that hasn't been requested. But more significantly, there's recent, relatively recent case law, such as the McKenzie case, which was an appellate court case that my brother attorney Rizio was involved with in Monroe. And I know Mr. Went is familiar with, where there was a waiver, there was a provision that the commission could waive certain landscaping requirements. And the court found that that was, that violated the principles of uniformity, which provide that all properties in a zone have to be treated equally and sort of allowing waivers of certain shallow requirements violates the uniformity requirements. But it's of no moment because it hasn't been requested by the applicant. Next, we get to the issue of aisle width. And pursuant to section 2911, under our regulations, a one-way aisle with 90-degree parking requires a 24-foot-wide aisle for cars to maneuver. And obviously, that has not been provided by the applicant. It hasn't remotely been required. And in fact, large portions of parking spaces, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, a little bit of 6, are extended into an area that would be reserved for a one-way parking aisle. I spoke to the town engineer about that, and she concurred. We, we had a discussion, actually. So the parking spaces are presently angled at 70 degrees. The, I'm referring to a, the regulation refers to 90-degree parking. So you might say, "Well, this is 70 degrees." The next area of relief under the regulations is when parking spaces are at a 60-degree angle. And if the parking spaces were at a 60-degree angle so that they were sharper, in other words, more tilted, I suppose, in a counterclockwise way, or further, the southerly portions were tipped to the east a bit, then the aisle requirement could potentially be reduced to 18 feet. But the problem with tilting them that way is you lose geometrically, if you, if you had to tilt each of the spaces, you would actually lose width because they would be tipped against the property line. And on the diagonal, they would actually extend further into the property, if you can imagine that. And I provided the commission with the appendix that's attached to our zoning regulations, which shows the width. I would also indicate that I've talked to, besides talking to the town engineer, I spoke to a number of traffic engineers who really speak to this 24, our larger dimension is being critical to allow cars to maneuver. But Fairfield's regulations go a little bit further because in your regulations, there's also a requirement under 28.11 that requires room for a vehicle of 18 feet to be able to maneuver without entering into the public right-of-way. And as Laura Pooley, our town engineer, indicated, 24 feet is required, and then she also references the, you know, the 60-degree angle. But she, she, even the town engineer concedes that spaces 1, 2, 3, and 4 should not be counted towards parking spaces on this site because there's just completely inadequate maneuvering area for cars. Obviously, the aisle is too narrow. I don't believe that the site can be remedied to accommodate 10 cars. I, I had someone work through that, but I am not submitting that to the commission at this time. But there, it just simply is inadequate room to maneuver. And another thing that a traffic engineer that we've consulted with indicated is, what's equally troubling is with this layout, if a car pulled into this lot and took a left turn into the lot and parked in space, say, space three, if a car parked in space three, then the engineer suggested that cars, a car could not pull into space number two because there's not enough maneuvering room for a car to maneuver. And similarly, if a car were in space number two, then a car actually could not get into space number one because of the layout and the inadequate swing room for vehicles. So obviously, all of these violate various provisions of, of section 28 zoning regulations. So, and there's inadequate maneuvering room. And once again, that's been confirmed with the town engineer. The next issue, and I know one that we've discussed in the past, is sort of the nightmare that this site would present for any sort of delivery, any sort of refuse pickup. And you can see that the layout is, is really, really awkward for dumpster, emptying the dumpster. And certainly, if there were almost any cars in the lot, a truck could not go to that space and properly maneuver in the lot. So it presents those problems. I believe that there may be, and I'm not going to stand on this issue, but I believe that the, also, the non-conformity of the building with the flood plain regulations in that the existing floor is below the required elevation of 10 feet, and expanding that would be expansion of a non-conformity. I think the regulation is open to some interpretation in terms of floodproofing, but I know, I'm just going to put, just state that and have that in the record. Another issue is on landscaping. You see the planters adjacent to South Benson Road. And I think that the applicant has been informed in the code minutes, and under, under no circumstances could the applicant provide the landscaping that it proposes in the town right-of-way without, you know, obviously, I suppose, permission from the Board of Selectment. I don't know. But there's no basis and no ability for the applicant to propose landscaping along South Benson Road in those boxes. And that would be a pretty awkward arrangement. So I just want to spend a moment on the standards for approval. And specifically, I'd like to start with section 27.4, which is the approval of a special exception permit. And I would, first of all, under 27.4, those are the conditions for approval for a special exception. And those are incorporated into the special permit. Those are specifically incorporated into the conditions for approval for a special permit. But 27.4.1 says that "The location type, character, and size of use in buildings and structures shall be in harmony with and conform to appropriate and orderly development of the town and the neighborhood." And then, this is significant. "And not hinder or discourage appropriate development and use of adjacent property or impair its value." As my client has indicated, and as this commission can imagine, with no parking in the area and no parking allowed on other private property and with inadequate parking on this property, there can be little doubt that there will be problems with patrons of this business and employees parking on adjacent properties and, you know, sort of impairing the use of adjacent properties and creating problems for them. 27.4.3 says, "The streets serving the proposed use shall be adequate to carry prospective traffic. Provision shall be made for entering and leaving the property without creating undue hazard to traffic or congestion. An adequate off-street parking and loading shall be provided on the same lot." In accordance with section 28, I would suggest that, first of all, the applicant did not provide any evidence for this commission. And I know, as this commission knows, that ordinarily, the applicant would have provided a traffic consultant who would have enabled the commission to make findings as to the safe use of this site. The applicant is eliminating an entrance into the site. That probably is important for vehicles, for example, entering northbound from South Benson Road, but they're eliminating that, which provides the requirement that cars sort of wind around the intersection and into the right. And once again, no traffic study of any kind or any evidence has been provided by the applicant on that. 27.4.4 requires that landscaping shall be provided in accordance with section 25.7.6. I would suggest that the landscaping that is proposed is not compliant. And once again, that some of it is off-site. So that's the, so it doesn't meet the special exception requirements. And I'll try to move along, and I know I'm long-winded here, but I just want to make a record. And 25.7 deals with the approval of special permits. And once again, in the, in the introductory language of 25.7, it has that language that says, "It shall conform to any applicable special standards for special exception uses and conform to the following requirements." First, that the, well, obviously, the use is permitted, but the, just a moment, my screen just went blank here. Here we go. 25.7.5, again, makes reference to the use of the property and a finding that this commission has to make, "That the lot is of sufficient size and shape to permit the use for buildings and other structures and facilities in such a manner that will not be detrimental to the neighborhood or adjacent property." And once again, you know, and I know I've said it probably too many times already, but the parking is, under any circumstances, going to be a real problem here. And then there's 25.7.7, which is, "The development shown on the site plan and architectural plans shall be of such a character as to harmonize with the neighborhood to accomplish a transition in character to protect property values." to protect property values, and to preserve and enhance the appearance and beauty of the community, and to avoid undue traffic congestion. And I would suggest that, once again, the applicant has not provided a basis for the commission to make that finding. So in some summary, you have a nonconforming site plan, which is fatal to the application immediately. Again, we, we, my client and I would love to see this site developed in an appropriate manner. But this is just a really, while it's attractive, it's a very poorly conceived application in terms of its impact on the neighborhood and the parking and traffic issue. And once again, the applicant did not provide the evidence in a basis from which this commission can make the findings that it needs to make for a special exception and for a special permit. And I'm happy to answer any questions, but once again, I always want to thank the commission for your generous patience and your attention. And I apologize for rambling on, but I just wanted to get all of this into the record, and I'll answer any questions you have.
Thanks very much. Does anybody have any questions for Attorney Green? Think you were quite thorough. Okay. Seeing none, thank you very much.
You're Mr. Chairman.
All right, and I will throw it open one more time to any other public comment before closing that portion of the hearing. So Ms. Harrigan, do we have anybody that's signed up in the chat in the meantime?
I do not see anybody else who hasn't already spoken.
If anyone else would like to speak, you need to speak up.
I did, I did have a comment in the thing. This is David Grinley, Fairfield. I, I don't know if this is the time to talk about it, but just the concern about the noise. And, you know, if there's outdoor seating, is there music playing?
So, Mr. Grinley?
Yeah.
I don't, forgive me, but was it you who spoke up before?
Yeah.
So typically, what we, we like to have, you know, everybody goes once. But
Okay.
Un-understandable in this circumstance that you thought you were just chiming in with that one issue. So please go ahead. But in the future, we just have to, we try and condense, you know, everybody goes once. All right? So please, so please, please go ahead with your, your comment.
The question was just about the noise level with outdoor seating, you know, was there music? Is, you know, those factors for the neighbors that are around that area?
Sure, okay. And if the applicant would like to address that on their rebuttal, I'll, I'll just note that there, there's sound ordinances. And like every other restaurant, they have to comply with the, the local regulations with respect to outdoor dining, sound, music, et cetera.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public? Okay, you're hearing none, then I'll close the public hearing portion, the public comment portion of the hearing. And I will go back to the applicant for any rebuttal.
With the engineer, can we send?
No.
Can, can I speak instead? Mr. Chairman James Zumo, Lancer Bank Services.
Sure, yeah, on behalf of the applicant.
Yeah, on behalf of the applicant, yeah.
Your time.
A-as per usual, Attorney Green did a great job. We're running into a situation on this site where we are extremely nonconforming in all aspects. The parking regulations that govern the site, that govern the whole property allow for very limited use for what we can design and what we can get on the site for, you know, retail purposes, restaurant purposes, medical office purposes. So our, our intent was to, to best fit the site. Our intent is to keep working if, if that's what we need to do to make the site, to make, make this work. But i-it's just the, the nonconformity of the site, just it, it overruns everything for, for any, for, for really multiple uses. So I, and that's, I just, that's all I wanted to say.
Okay.
I understand that Declan Mahar is gonna.
All right.
Hey, Jimmy, thank you very much for speaking up. Just wanted to kind of get over, you know, talk about the fact that this is a derelict building. It's been a kind of an eyesore. I live in the town. I lived less than a mile from there for, for years. It's been a kind of a derelict, broken down site. And I can't imagine something that'll work there except for my type of place. And that's kind of why we envisioned it. And, you know, I envisioned kids riding their bicycles from the beach area up the sidewalks and coming to Pizzico and making it a neighborhood place that people would want to go to. You know, it's not going to be rock bands and loud music. As one of the neighbors, you know, had a concern, I don't see that as an issue. 60% of what we do in our other location is takeout between DoorDash, you know, Grubhub, Uber Eats, that type of thing. So the parking issue, which we did get the variance for, I think will be more than adequate. There is off-street park, parking, black, you know, blackway on Elliott Street, Elliott Place, Belmont Street, maybe even the outpost road. I don't know if you can legally park there or not. I don't see many cars parked there when I drive by there every day. But, but there are cars that do park there. I believe it'll improve the traffic flow by taking out that South Benson Road entrance. And I think that will help the traffic flow, flow in that area considerably. And typically, things like trash removal and our deliveries happen before noon when we're not open, so I don't see that being an issue. And I think what we're proposing is one of the few things that will work on this site whatsoever. So, you know, that's kind of my thoughts on it. And I envision something that will be a gateway to the town where people do get off at five and see it. And I think it's the kind of thing that'll add value to the town and add value to the area. And Sam, you want to throw that back to John, because you're the applicant? John Bochanis, Attorney.
John, go ahead.
And, John Bochanis, on behalf of the applicant.
Just one second, I'm getting a lot of feedback here. If everyone could just go on mute and then we'll see if that persists. Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Um, just to respond to some of the concerns that were raised. First of all, we should start off by saying that the use is permitted with regard to this property. So we start off with that as the foundation that the use is permitted. Number two, I, I know a lot has been discussed about, raised concerning the parking. The parking, as depicted, was exactly what was presented to the zoning board of appeals. And it was approved with variances regarding setbacks and with regard to the parking issue. So I know a lot has been discussed about parking, but what was presented to zoning board of appeals was the site plan that, that we have here reducing the needed parking. So in addition, what was raised is whether something changed since the ZBA hearing with regard to the Mr. Miller from the funeral home and, and his discussion about potentially also using parking at the funeral home. Well, what we want to say, what, what has not changed is the fact that the adjoining property is allowing the use of their lot for parking. And that, and, and that's the South Pine Creek property, which has been referred to as the, the here dressing or, or beauty salon, which is a, a business that operates by appointment. They, Mr. Green seems to have done a lot of investigation into the, to that business. But what he failed to mention is that they only have two people come at a time by appointment. So the use of that lot is not extensive at all. The use of that parking lot is directly adjoining the parking area near parking spots one, two, and three, which there's direct access between the two lots there, the two adjoining lots. What was mentioned also, so with regard to what was presented to the ZBA, nothing has changed with regard to the agreement to use that adjoining lot. There was some discussion that I think Mr. Green's alluding to as to whether Miller, at the, the Spear Miller could would, or would allow also some additional parking there, which again, is not needed because of the fact that we have the, the variance granted pertaining to the parking. But what I should mention, I think is pertinent here is with regard to Mr. Miller, he was in favor of the development of this dilapidated gas station to become Pizzico and is in favor, but he did get a phone call from Mr. Warren as the representative of the parking lot indicating that he was not to allow any parking because he has an agreement with Mr. Warren's client to park, have overflow parking in the Bob's parking lot. So what Mr. Warren has done is contacted Mr. Spear and spoke to him about not allowing any type of cooperation with a future neighbor. But needless to say, we like to cooperate with everybody. And I think the plan that was submitted goes that way in terms of what was presented in terms of the parking issue on this nonconforming lot. And again, there will be adequate parking pursuant to the variance that was granted. In addition, there is that additional parking on the adjoining lot on South Benson Road. What I should emphasize, though, with regard to parking is that the square footage of the indoor area of the eating area, the dining area, is only 370 square feet. So it's a very small dining area, 370 square feet is the area of the, is the dining area. So this is not a large operation. The outdoor portion is seasonal, the, the porch to the, to the west of the property. So again, we're talking about a very small footprint of a dining room. So Mr. Green had mentioned about the number of people potentially going there. But as we heard from Mr. Mar, 50 to 60% is going to be takeout. We're dealing with a 370-foot indoor dining area. And again, it's, it's not, it, it's not a large eat-in area with regard to the use of this property. What there, with regard to the regulations that were mentioned, and we, we go to the special exception regulations, 27.1. And what was mentioned by Mr. Green and I think Mr. Warren alluding to is that the use and the and how it impacts the neighborhood, neighboring areas or the adjoining areas. Well, we've heard from Mr. Warren. Apparently, he wants nobody parking there except for, well, he, he allows parking apparently, but, but he doesn't want anybody from Pizzico parking there. So, you know, be that as it may, we don't intend to use his parking area because he doesn't want anybody from Pizzico using that. And, and, and he's, he's indicated that he has others have parked there and he has agreements though with Spear Miller to use their, his parking lot. He has agreements with the cleaners and with the other adjoining areas about use of his parking lot. So we understand he specifically does not want Pizzico to use it, but that was not needed for the variance at the zoning board of appeals. And we're not here seeking to use his parking lot either. And this is not going to impact his property except for what he told Mr. Mar. And what he told Mr. Mar through a telephone conversation is that he would be in favor of this except for the fact that he has a new tenant in his property. And this is Mr. Warren who stated this, that he would be in favor of this but for the fact that he has a new tenant that opened up a pizza restaurant and that has, that has an Italian restaurant, I should say, that will also be serving pizzas. And he believed that he had to object to that because of his new tenant. And so Mr. Warren is here today saying he's upset by this, although it doesn't appear he was too upset by the fact that we had a dilapidated service station that's been there for years, which actually serves as the gateway to the center or the central business area of the town of Fairfield, where this, where the future Pizzico would be located. So with pursuant to the special exception regulations, this would be an improvement to the surrounding area. And we're not here as a chain restaurant. We're not here as a fast food restaurant. We're here as a locally owned business with a very novel concept that's been very successful in Stratford, across from the Two Roads Brewery. And we're making the best use we could possibly make with this nonconforming lot, using the existing building but for a small walk-in cooler in a small square footage area of a kitchen. And again, you know, without beating this over and over again with regard to this parking issue, we've heard from our engineer indicating that he's willing to work with the town concerning the swing of the parking area of the cars coming in and out. And again, this did not become an issue at all until four o'clock. And we understand why because Mr. Green contacted the town unilaterally and expressed his concerns on behalf of his client concerning the, the parking at this location. And again, nothing was raised at the zoning board of appeals with regard to the, the grant of the variance in terms of reducing the parking to the, to the 10 spots that were presented here tonight to the board. With regard to additional parking also, as the owner of the property has also indicated, there is additional parking that he cited behind the Sunny Days area also. But again, how, how we look at this, we're not here as a Superior Court or, or, or any type of appellate tribunal over the ZBA decision. And I think a lot of what Mr. Green said is what he could have said before the ZBA, which he did not, and neither did Mr. Warren. But for now presenting it, and we know why, because of the opening of the, of the Italian restaurant as a tenant in the shopping plaza. I don't believe I have anything else to mention unless, of course, there are some questions.
Thank you very much for that rebuttal and summary. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for Attorney Bochanis? Commissioner Francis? You're on mute.
No, I have one more for staff about our process.
What is, what?
Does the zoning board of appeals is code enforcement first? And then zoning board of appeals? And where does the town engineer fit in? Because it's, it's rather strange to get this report from the town engineer. Because it's it's rather strange to get this report from the town engineer at four o'clock today, when it went to zoning board of appeals, I would assume a few weeks ago. I, I.
So, so I, I might, yeah. Mr. Wen, why don't you give a, a very, very short, um, uh, summary of of those steps in the process? But th- this issue, I think, is more ripe for our consideration in executive session when we're considering the application, as opposed to during the applicant's, uh, presentation tonight. But Mr. Wen, if you want to just give us a hit list.
Yeah, quickly, Jim went for the record. In thi- in this case, the the code meeting was on February the ninth, which predated the zoning board of appeals hearing by a couple of months. And we did raise in our comments, uh, and 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 again, I agree with the the chairman that that we can talk about this in in deliberations, but some of the, some of the issues that were raised, um, by Ms. Pooley in her comments this afternoon were were not the first time that they've been raised. So, uh, if you, if you look at the code minutes in February 19, some of those issues were also raised at that time.
But Mr. Bochanis, your, your arguments are are all well heard and, uh, will be considered and, uh, along with everything else in the record. Commissioner Noonan?
Thank you, uh, Attorney Bochanis. Were you at the, um, or participated in the, um, variance, uh, hearing?
I did not. I, well, I.
Sorry. If anyone's not speaking, if you could just please go on mute, we're getting some background.
I think that might have been on my end. Um, Attorney Bochanis, were you a part or, um, attended or participated in the variance hearing?
I, I, I was attending as I'm attending here, but did not speak.
Okay. How much, I I assume that these other agreements to use other parking lots was brought to the, uh, board, the variance board's, uh, attention and relied upon by the board?
Well, the adjoining, uh, there was discussion about the adjoining lot, but I think, um, we're sort of getting off the, um, uh, you know, the red herring here being the whether there was in the, in agreement with, uh, Mr. Miller and now that is now revoked type of issue. But wha- what was discussed at that ZBA and what was granted was the fact that this was reduced to 10, um, 10 spots, um, and that there was discussion about this adjoining lot at South Benson that, uh, was, uh, available for parking also.
Okay, so I mean, but regardless, you, it was put forth into the variance board, uh, zoning board of appeals that there was opportunities to park on adjoining lots and?
Uh, there's, uh, right, there's one adjoining lot. Mr. Miller's lot doesn't, is the next property beyond that. And and I, and I mentioned that for significance sake because of the fact that, um, that was mentioned that also as a potential, but for, uh, Mr. Warren contacting Mr. Miller after that and saying, don't allow people from Pizza Co. to park in your lot because you have an agreement, Mr. Miller, with us, Mr. Warren being the representative of the Bob's lot, and we don't want.
I'm not terribly, not concerned about that. I'm just trying to get a sense, and I guess really that's probably on me, on us to go through the, um, what the zoning board of appeals did and maybe even looking at their, um, transcript, how much they relied upon.
Sure.
Other parking lots availability in determining whether there were, uh, in making their decision uh, regards to necessity. And I guess maybe I'm asking you, uh, because you're sitting in front of me as an attorney, if that, if that was, if they did rely upon other parking opportunities outside of this site.
Right, and and I didn't, uh, listen to the, um, their deliberations pertaining to the granting of the variance. So I I don't want to go into the mental impressions that they had making it. But it it was raised, uh, number one, uh, about the adjoining property. There is also discussion about Mr. Miller's property also. So I would agree that it was mentioned, but again, uh, I I I don't want to crystal ball into the mental impressions that that they had in granting the the variance. But as again, uh, it it they granted 10 spots, uh, with regard to the variance, uh, the record in the decision reflects that they granted, uh, the variance with regard to the 10 parking spaces. Not conditional on on something else, though. It's not conditional. So if they wanted a condition, they would have imposed that.
Attorney Green had mentioned that there, in addition to employees, uh, there were about 75 to 80 seats, noting out, you know, including outside and all that stuff. Um, but is that about right?
I, I, I disagree with that because of the fact, uh, what in terms of what is projected to happen on this property, again, is that 50%, you know, to be takeout. Um, th- these, um, it it's a very small square footage of 370 square feet in the inside dining area. So.
But you have, I, but you're asking for outside dining, correct?
Right, there is the out seasonal outdoor porch on the western part of the property, yes.
So I mean, if you, if you have full capacity inside and out, he, Attorney Green is, I believe, said about 75 seats. And I don't know, I I don't have it in front of me. Um, I'm not sure how accurate that is, but I, I guess my question really is, um, let's just assume 75 seats is accurate for full capacity during the summer. That would, I agree initially that that may strike me as an issue that's worthy of consideration under these, uh, special permit considerations. Um, would the applicant consider modif- either a modification or, uh, a condition of approval that their total capacity in season would be less, some, something less than 75 seats?
Well, um, a- again, what we are more than willing to work with the town to make this unusually shaped lot, uh, and to improve this lot. So we're more than willing to work with the town with this. But and parenthetically, though, I should mention that, um, this was presented to the zoning board of appeals also with the approval, uh, in terms of what the potential seating would be. But again, wh- we are here to cooperate with the town, uh, in terms of improving this long neglected, dilapidated area of town.
And I appreciate that, but and it's not as if you and I can sit down at the end of this at my next session to kind of work this out. I will have to make a determination in two weeks or whenever this comes up. Um, and we're obviously not going to have a chance to work it out. So I'm trying to get a sense, uh, from the applicants, you or anybody, uh, from a business standpoint, if all capacity in season is 75, or tell me if it's less than that, is a condition of approval of something less, or even if we got rid of outdoor dining completely, so that all capacity, you know, 10 ste- 10 spots makes sense. I acknowledge what you said about the variance, but I'm putting that aside for now.
Right, but.
A sense of the business standpoint of what the applicant is able, willing to do.
Well, I, I, I think with those numbers that were just mentioned, I think, uh, how it it's it's in the, um, the documents that were presented. But with regard to the counting that Mr. Green did too, I think he counted, uh, approximately 12, or it might have been slightly more of that, as bar patrons or, um, so again, um, uh, what what we're not projecting that that type of number, but, uh, tha- that is including approximately 12. I think he counted at least 12, uh, bar, uh, stools, uh, into his number to inflate the number. But again, um, uh, you know, we're, we're willing to, uh, to work in terms of the seating area. And and a lot of those tables, a- as noted, uh, are, um, tables of fours. Um, so, you know, we're not expecting every person, uh, to obviously be driving a, a car there. And in fact, as we've seen over the past year, there's been a lot of pedestrian traffic, and this is near the beach area, which we're, uh, projecting is going to attract a lot of pedestrian traffic, rather than what we're presuming to be, uh, you know, hopping in a car. And that's why, as part of it, uh, we've agreed to the bike racks also being installed on the property. So I guess to answer your question, uh, w- we are, uh, amenable to, uh, to to mitigating any of the parking issues by the, uh, by, uh, a reduction in the seating capacity.
Okay, and just because you reminded me, this, um, the applicant has a bar? Is that the idea, when the bar seating is of some kind of bar, full or otherwise?
Liquor license, full, full liquor license?
Yes, of, of course, restaurant, right, yes.
Restaurant with a full bar.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Berman?
I just wanted to, um, maybe, uh, Mr. Wen is already doing this, but I would would be interested to see the record from the ZBA, as, uh, I would imagine, Commissioner Noonan, what, just to add to our record?
Okay, so, uh, thank you so noted. We'll, 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 the minute that there's the application and then the, some other materials in the record, but we'll get what we can and supplement that. Circulate that. Any other commissioners have any other questions or comments for the applicant? Commissioner Brown?
Are you planning on coming back with revised plans? I thought I heard that mentioned earlier. Or is this ending tonight?
The applicant has not asked for any extensions? They've not indicated that they're going to revise any plans?
Okay.
Um, um, yeah. Well, a- again, if, you know, my understanding, there might be for discussion with, uh, on the engineering aspect about the, the parking that the, the late, um, issues that were raised concerning them.
So you're either going to satisfy, uh, uh, Ms. Pooley that, um, the plans as they're laid in the site plan today, um, comply with the regulations and spacing and, you know, all of the, 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 the issues that she raised, uh, or you're not. And if you, at a later date, have to revise the site plan, we're going to have to make a decision as to whether that's a material difference. And if it's a material difference, then we're going to have to come back and so forth. Um, so, you know, uh, look, I'm, I'm not telling you how to, how to do your job, right? Um, you, you, you're the applicant and you, you control, uh, you know, the procedures that you employ in prosecuting your application. Um, there have been occasions where applicants have asked, uh, for the, um, the public hearing to be kept open so that they can make a revision or or the like, um, you know, but by the same token, we're, we're in rebuttal at this point, right? So.
Yes.
And if you did that, then I would have to open that public hearing back up to public comment after, uh, your adversary has a chance to review that and.
No.
You, you understand what I'm, right? So, so, you know, that, the, those decisions are, are tactical and 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 they're yours to make. Right?
This is Bart Stanko as part of the rebuttal. And just what Bart Stanko with a, as part of the rebuttal with property owner?
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Stanko, did, did you not comment during public comment?
Yes, I did.
Right, I, I, so, so you're not a part of the applicant's team, are you?
Well, he's the owner. Yeah. So just like Mr. Warren, I, I mean, as a representative of the, uh.
Sure. No, I didn't. I didn't, I said, I mean, so, so he, he, and that, e- even though he commented twice during public comment, he should have made his comments during the applicant's presentation and not as a member of the public chiming in as, as, as the applicant. Um, so I had to tell you, thi- this has been perhaps the most strange journey of, uh, application that I have experienced in 10 years of sitting on the commission. With, with, with respect and and appreciation for the effort, uh, um, uh, to transform the lot, uh, into something, uh, that is, uh, more productive and, um, more welcoming than it is, uh, today and has been for some time. So, um, you know, uh, yeah. With that, Mr. Stanko, I hope your comments are really significant because we've been going at this now for several hours and you've had more than your fair share of biting at the apple.
I will be very brief. It was just two comments. One is that as far as those planters that were in there right away, they could be pulled back to the property line. And the second one, if it makes more sense, could even look at additional parking agreements with other areas. That's it.
Okay. All right, very good. Any other commissioners have any questions? Okay. Commissioner Francis? You're on mute.
Better than I did last night. 22 seats inside and 20 more on the porch, which is also permanent. So that's 42 and 12 bar seats. Um, and 10 parking spaces, four of which aren't you, aren't, don't meet the requirements. And granted, the parking, the ZBA reduced, gave them a waiver for 10 spaces instead of 20, but 10 of them, four of them aren't usable, according to the town engineer and.
Uh, is this, are you, for this, are, so with, 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 again, uh, the utmost respect, uh, are you arguing, debating, uh, you know, for the, on the application or do you have a question?
I want to make sure I'm understanding this right. Forty-two seats and 12 at the bar and 10 parking spaces by waiver from 20, and only six of them are usable. Is that, is that right?
So, um, I, I think that, uh, the, this is properly the, the subject of our, our deliberations and when we consider the application and we talk about this. But, um, the, the town engineer has put forth a paper which suggests that there are four spaces that don't meet the requirements. And the applicant has argued here tonight that they can, uh, rebut those allegations and show how the, the spaces are compliant. So it is, it is, uh, in contention as to whether those 10 spaces on this, as shown on the site plan, are compliant with our regulations. I think that is the nearest way to describe it.
Correct.
Pickup goes on all the time.
The which?
Picking up, taking out.
Correct, right. That's a brief stop and pick up the pizza and leave, yes.
Okay. Very good. Uh, well, Attorney Bochanis, uh, and, uh, Mr. Gardner, your team, thank you very much. Um, uh, and, um, with that, um, hearing no further comments, um, I will close the public hearing, uh, on this item. And that being, uh, our business on the agenda, I will close, uh, adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.
Very good.
Just one reminder, Mr. Chairman, that, uh, we are convening again tomorrow evening at 6:30.
Yes, for all the commissioners and members of the public that want to come in and listen to the pasta, the, 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 all of the, uh, the merits of us, uh, amending our regulations for the downtown commercial district.
Thank you.